Oh, 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 oh. Oh, I spent a time or two we needed that. Staring at it, hmm.
You were never the best, you didn't know what's you. He was put it out for Shaggy.
Oh, my goodness. We had a closed session right before this, so that's why we're running just a little bit late getting ready, ready. You ready? Okay, he's ready. All right, let's stay and say. I place allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, underdog, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, someone to give me approval of the agenda, please. I'll move who approved the agenda. Thank you, Randy. Second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any announcements?
Mayor and council this evening, I would like to take just a moment and introduce the new district captain from Mills River from the Henderson County Sheriff's Office. We've got Captain Darren Whitaker here. He is the new captain replacing the former captain, Andrew Starling, who's been promoted to major. So, Captain Whitaker, I don't know if you want to say a word or two, but welcome.
I know you're wrong. Local, Randy and I went to hospital together, I've done channels for years, so, uh, appreciate it.
Thanks for being here for us. Good. You got one more? Okay, 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 thank you. Uh, any public comment? We got anybody signed up tonight? No? Okay. Any public comment here? No? Uh, approval of consent agenda, please? Yes?
Just for the record, um, I've heard from both council member Young and council member Gude, and there were a couple of corrections in the minutes.
Okay.
You have corrected ones to sign.
Okay, all right. Okay, everybody understand? It's the prove, uh, as presented then? Thank you, Sandra. Second? Second, thank you, Randy. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, moving on to the regular agenda, Mills River Farmers Market Location Discussion.
You connect with Joe and Linda, they unfortunately both have COVID right now. And then my printer.
Just make sure, we'll make sure she gets one. And if you need a copy, feel free to hang on to one for that. Okay.
I'm the new printer, the high dollar printer.
I know.
Reconnected with Joe and Linda, okay. Um, so the Mills River Farmers Market, uh, brings about a hundred families, a hundred and fifty families a week, um, and provides fresh, local, healthy food for those enrolled in SNAP at half the price of the grocery store. Um, but the Mills River Market is a lot more than just a market. It's a community center where children learn about food that grows around them, where seasonal recipes are prepared and shared, where young adults get a chance to begin their entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial endeavors, and where families directly connect with local farmers, artisans, and other members of their community. As the market moves into its fifteenth season, we'd like to extend our deepest gratitude for your generous support. We truly could not have reached this point without you. Throughout these fifteen years, the market has moved a couple times and has, like the rest of Mills River, grown quite a bit. As our customer base continues to expand, we're seeing more and more local vendors interested in participating as well. And thanks to the town of Mills River, this was also our first year with payroll employees working for the market. Now, more than ever, the market needs a permanent home. We're asking the town of Mills River to designate a port, a portion of the recent property purchased, um, for the use of the Mills River Farm Market, the dress call property, I think that's like already implied. Uh, we're looking for a parking lot, uh, large enough to accommodate fifty vendors and a minimum of seventy-five shoppers at a time. Uh, amenities would include a potable water source, electrical access for the musicians, coffee vendor, and the market information booth. Restroom facilities are also needed, but portable toilets will suffice. A storage facility for market supplies and materials would also be needed, which the Mills River Farm Market would be able to purchase. Now that the Mills River Market has paid employees, we also need a designated office to safely store important documents. In its current arrangement, the market is relying solely on three or four people to keep it running. So, most of the infrastructure is located on a trailer parked in the Britton's yard. Um, and the paperwork is split in between me and the Britton's homes. We also know, we all know that life can change at any moment, so if anything happens, uh, then the market will struggle. Having a permanent space would make it so that as employees come and go, the market remain. We propose this space be made available to the Mills River Market with some type of contractual agreement. For example, a minimum of ten years or while the market is in existence with an option to renew for total token rental payment of perhaps a dollar a year. The Mills River Farm Market would require the use of the space Saturdays, May through October, with the possibility, possibility of extra days needed for holiday markets or other special gatherings for the benefit of Mills River Market, um, less than fifty days per, yeah. Less than fifty days out of the year. The space would be available, um, for the use of the town of Mills River during the off-market season as well as during the week when not in use by the market, which is roughly three hundred and twenty days per year. This arrangement will benefit the market immensely, but it will also benefit the town of Mills River by providing a space for the market. Will make a statement to the citizens of town, of the town, that you are supporters of local agriculture and more than just words. The citizen of, citizens of the town of Mills River have repeatedly spoken out to keep us focused on agriculture. Other municipalities in western North Carolina give financial support to their local farmers' markets. Some of those are Transylvania County Farmers Market, City of Boone, Watu, sorry, I'm not from around here, Watu, Watuga? Watauga? And King Street Farmers Markets. City of Hendersonville, Hendersonville Farmers Market, City of Asheville, Asheville City Market, and Rutherford, Rutherford County, or Rutherford County Farmers Market. Other small municipalities will be able to see your support and use your action as a guide to improve the relationship with their local farmer producer community. You will be supporting a local farmers' market or local farmers and producers by providing a space large enough for growth and convenient for all. You'll be helping the local economy by keeping our dollars in this area and supporting local kids in their entrepreneurial pursuits. The shoppers will be happy for easy access to parking, spatial, space for special events, and the possibility of multiple safe exit points. Finally, other visitors to the Mills River Park will hopefully become patrons and support our, our local economy by becoming local shoppers. Sorry, I get really nervous in front of people. Um, but I guess we're just like letting Joe and Linda answer questions unless I, I mean, if I have the answer to them, I'm happy to answer them, but Joe and Linda have been around for fourteen years, so.
Do you happen to know, like, how much these other municipalities contribute? You know, like.
As far as. As far as like money?
Money.
I, I personally have no idea. Joe or Linda, do you know?
Uh, all right, can I, are you hearing me?
They're on there, I don't know if they can, they're talking or not.
It looks like.
Okay, I'm here.
Can you hear us?
We are unmuted.
All right, I'm.
All right, I'm calling.
I'm calling in.
I'm calling in on the phone number. There we go. All right, Daniel, can you hear me? I'm calling on the phone number.
Also just like call them and put them on speaker, that's.
Joe and Linda, can you hear us at home? Could you answer a couple of questions?
Yes, I can hear you. I'm calling in on the phone number.
Said they're waiting for the connection, Nicole, I'm just gonna call her.
Hey, can you hear us? Yeah, I can. Screen is my phone number because the computer sound is not work.
Okay, um, we're just, we're just gonna. I, I wasn't sure if we're gonna, okay, I was, I was scared it was gonna like squeak or something. Okay. Um, all right, so Shannon asked, um, how much money, do you know how much money? Um, the other municipalities get from, their, or their farmers markets get from their cities? Counting.
I know a couple of them.
That's information fine.
We can get it, but most of them are a little reticent to get it, even though it's public record. But, uh, the city of Brevard gives approximately three thousand.
The city of Brevard and Transylvania County combined give approximately thirty thousand dollars to the, their market.
To their market.
Uh, then plus they get, uh, money from the tour, travel and tourism section.
Their, their facility, their, their parking lot that they use is actually owned by two different businesses, so they have arrangements with them for the parking lot, but they get the financial support that pays salaries and anything. There's no, uh, strings attached. It goes into a pot, is the way their market manager called it, and that, they, they use it for what they need it for.
The town of Hendersonville gives them a space, gives them the, the, uh.
Area by the depot.
Area by the depot, plus pays the salary for their manager, which is right at, uh, forty-nine thousand.
It was forty-something thousand a year for him, but he is also the, uh, special events for the city of Hendersonville, not just the, uh, that just, not just the farmers' market. Uh, the city of Asheville recently put, uh, electric drops all the way down Market Street for the Asheville City Market to, uh, have, so that all their vendors have access to electricity.
And the city of Asheville waves all fees there for their farmers' market, which is quite a substantial amount in Asheville. I don't know the exact numbers, but we could, we could probably find that. I'm not sure.
Rutherford County provides a covered shed for their people.
And some financial, but we don't, we could find this all out.
But. Information was given to, most of this information was given to us from ASAP, although I did get some directly from market managers.
Okay. I was just trying to get an idea. Uh, who else is getting questions?
It varies, and like I say, a lot of, but most of the towns or municipalities and counties support the markets. It just depends on what they, you know, what the market needs and what they're doing. And I, I apologize for not having that information. As you've heard, I'm sure Linda and I both have COVID and are not really a hundred percent the last few days, so please forgive us. I appreciate y'all talking to us. I'm really sorry we couldn't be there. And, you know, but.
No one wants COVID, Joe, it's fine.
Hey.
We're glad you're feeling better.
Any questions?
Be able to open this year, this season.
To be, do, I, we're, as far as opening this season, we're still, we're still on, like, for the two-year ARPA money, right?
No, what would they need facility?
Oh, facility-wise for.
Uh, gravel parking lot, oh.
This year? We're, we're still gonna, are we, we're still gonna be at the school this year, right?
What I think Sandra's asking, if we, if we could get an NP, if we could get a new home, location. What we would need, I've not been able to go and look at the property and see what it needs, but we would need like, like we, we were talking about at the, uh, other property, a gravel lot with a place to put some kind of storage facility that met the town's requirements, and a, a water tap and a couple of electrical outlets would be great. You know, we're still not looking for anything major, um, you know.
And that way, uh, the, the property would still be open for whatever other use the town might want to use it for. I know it's gonna look like a parking lot. Maybe a parking lot is what you need. I don't know, but, um, you know, we're not asking for any kind of, uh, farmers' market shed. You know, that, that might be our twenty-year dream. I don't know, but right now, we're, we're looking at a space that can replace our space at the Mills River Elementary School because we're just outgrowing it.
How many, how many spots? You know, Mills River School parking lot is probably a million dollars for that, so, and you say you're outgrowing that, um. Fair statement?
Some million dollars to make the parking lot, but you need is just more room. It doesn't have to be a fancy, extremely beautiful, whatever layout. We just need space that we can have, say, a minimum of, what did I say, tall, fifty vendors?
Yeah, fifty vendors.
So, that would be a hundred spaces for fifty vendors and then about seventy-five shoppers. So, we're looking at space for about a hundred and seventy-five vehicles roughly, just to give you a ballpark shape. I know when we looked at the other property and Joe and I walked in, we were looking at about an acre, because it was like two-twenty by two-twenty was gonna be the footprint that we would cover. So, it wouldn't take up the majority of your space there.
Okay. Um. Any other questions? I know that property over there, I hadn't been on it, you know, it would definitely have to have some engineering done to it, um. It's just raw land. I don't know that we could just push it flat and put gravel on it and be sufficient for the usage, um. It would just have something, council would have to get their heads together, and if that's the way they wanted to go, then we'd have to start off with some engineering work. Just me being in construction, I see there's no way to have it ready, even if we pulled the trigger by season start.
Yeah, we weren't, I don't think we were really planning on that, like, I mean, it would have, it would be wonderful, but I don't think it's realistic.
Okay. So, now that we know the needs and goals, I guess we could just discuss it a little bit and see if it gets any traction and go from there. Fair enough?
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so, anybody have anything else to offer and on this item right now, or you want to think it over and set foot over there and see and talk to Nicole and see if there's any goals and stuff that she'd like to say. A project of this undertaking would need multiple uses.
Yeah.
Sitting here and on the back, I figured, you know, his public record, we paid, if I'm not mistaken, three hundred eighty-nine thousand for the land. We'd probably have at least twenty-five thousand in engineering. And then four hundred thousand dollars in upgrades, so we're right at eight hundred thousand dollars to get us something over there to work with, and that, that would probably be paid, but, um, you know, real wet days, sometimes it's gonna be hard sell pitch to put them people out there and expect the clients to keep coming and buying and walking through a gravel lot, especially a new gravel.
Right.
It just takes a while for it to get hard such.
We just suggested a gravel lot because we figured that would be the less expensive of the routes, trying to think of the ways that we could, uh, ask for what we need without asking for too much.
Sure.
But we would have, of course, we would, uh, go by whatever the town deemed as most appropriate for this multiple-use project that we're asking for, something that would be useful for us, but also be useful to the rest of the, the park public that's coming out and community.
Yeah, exactly, like we were mentioning, we mentioned it's only, but you'll, you would have it for three hundred and twenty days out of the year, so the majority of it would be used not for the market, so we would need to figure something out that would be versatile.
I think what we'd have to do is just make a joint venture with the Parks and Rec and try to figure out, um, what would work for everybody.
Yeah, definitely.
Kind of money.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything?
Does it connect, or would it have to be a culvert?
Well, there is a branch where water runs through there. It's most of the time.
I'm, I'm assuming that would be pretty important.
I would think so.
Okay.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. That land kind of lays, kind of slanted back downhill on the back.
Yeah, there's one spot up close to the old Propest property that has been packed in and pretty flat, and then from there, it definitely slopes down to that intermittent stream.
Okay.
On that edge.
I would just suggest that council, when they get time on a pretty day, walk it and see what you think of it, and we'll move forward from there.
Yeah, I'm happy to take anyone over there if you want to know where the lines are.
What did you say, Joe? Sorry?
That, uh, if council gets together one pretty day and Linda and I are healed, I would love to walk it with you and look at it, because I really, I have a vague understanding where it is, but I don't really know the piece at all myself.
Yeah, it would, it would be good to visit together.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree.
So, when y'all get feeling better, uh, feel free to come by one day and Nicole will take you over and show you where it is and what it looks like and so you know, and then we'll go from there.
Sounds good.
Great.
Okay.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else on that, we'll move on to, uh, park and reg, and recreation fee discussion.
So, council, this evening, uh, you have in front of you a staff report, uh, regarding fee collection for our two shelters, the existing shelter and the new shelter, and you might recall this from last year, we talked about having separate, uh, fees for resident versus non-resident. At the time, though, we were doing everything manually, and, um, it was, it was difficult to administratively keep track of that. But since then, Nicole has worked diligently to, uh, implement the new software package, CivicRec, and, um, we'd like to discuss with you this evening, uh, your interest in setting fees, residents versus non-residents, and Nicole, I'm gonna hand it off to you, run through the details.
Sure, yeah, I think it gave you a little background. So, this came about last year with my parks, um, advisory committee. Um, it is very common with municipalities to, um, basically give a residency discount, the logic being that they pay taxes, they paid for the facility to be there, and so you basically charge your rate for non-residents, and then your residents get a discount because they've already paid their taxes to the town. And so that, as, uh, Daniel said, that came up at our, uh, park advisory meeting last year, logistically, administratively, it was just not really possible for us to check the residency of every person who came in and rented a picnic shelter. Um, so I told them I would revisit it once we got our new registration software. Um, and so basically, it's really just, um, the recommendation from the committee is to basically give a five-dollar discount for each rental shelter fee from the committee, um, so, but ultimately, it's up to y'all what you think. And, um, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Discussion.
So, I, I just have a question, Nicole. So, um, so a discount to residents, but is there any, you know of any municipality that does it as, um, they have preferential, a resident has preferential, uh, treatment whenever you're making reservation?
Yeah.
A non-resident could only make reservation two or three weeks in advance, where a resident could make a reservation, you know.
There is a lot more common with like programs, and that's something when we come bring in program fees to you with, um, it's a little harder with picnic shelter rentals, only because what you start to get is, you'll get, well, I'll get my friend who's a Mills River resident to come do it for me. And if you do that, then you, people start to play games if you make it a little too complicated. Um, but that is something with programs where there's like a limited number of spaces that I would highly recommend we do. Um, you know, if we are doing a, you know, yoga class that you, maybe a week in advance, or you open up that registration, so that way you know every Mills River resident had a chance to get in there before here non-residents could kind of fill in the rest of those spots. Um, as I said, it gets a little trickier with picnic shelters because it's just that person coming in with a fee and, um, so while it's done, it's much more common with programs than it is with facilities.
Were we only talking about shelters right now, or?
Right now, we will come back to, uh, I believe our next meeting is what it's currently scheduled for, for program fees. So, right now, we were just talking about shelters because we're ready to start taking those reservations online. And so, we just need to know what fees y'all would like us to put on there. We can leave it as is, and it's twenty-five dollars for everybody, or we can look at a discount. We can get raising the rates. It's completely at the pleasure of council.
All right, just me speaking out loud here. I certainly don't mind seeing residents get a, get a break on the, on the fee schedule, so, on this stuff.
And just for clarification, the twenty-five dollars now is what we currently charge, so it wouldn't be going up for new res, non-residents.
It would, yeah, be going.
Just be giving a break to the resident.
Right.
So, I know we're talking about a fee schedule, but is there, are we still taking the deposit in case they leave it? No?
Hmm, no, we haven't done that in probably about three or four years. What we found is, I don't think we ever kept a deposit, and the amount of work it created for administration, it just wasn't worth.
Fair enough.
Mm-hmm.
And having a grant, so, but any tax, I know when he asked before, you know, about charging fees for areas, basically, if they had a grant, they'd charge fees.
So, because of Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, you can't charge a fee to get in the park, but because they're getting specialized use, so it's, you're able to reserve it just for that facility. We've been doing that for years, so this doesn't change that. This, this is just changing the rate, but no, like, you couldn't put a gate at the park, like at the front entrance, and charge somebody to get in. Um, you couldn't limit it that way, um, but as far as like special uses, like things, people do special events out here, um, picnic shelter rentals, you know, athletic field rentals, that sort of thing, we can charge for those.
Okay, what's everybody thinking?
Is it uncommon to do nothing for the residents and make non-residents pay residents fee? Make it forty-five for non-residents and zero for residents?
I would, it would, the problem with chart, one, you're giving specialized use, so right now, it's free as a first come, first served, so if people want to show up and use it, they can. If, say, you're having your kid's birthday party out here, um, you're taking it away from other residents, so they're having a private party in that facility, and other Mills River residents wouldn't be able to use it during that time. Um, so there's that. You, I think you would also find that people would reserve it, and then they don't show up, and then we reserve space. You know, unfortunately, if something's free, then people aren't invested in it, and they won't call us to say it got canceled or whatever, and so I wouldn't recommend, I mean, we can lower the rate even more if that's something um, you all want it. Twenty percent is kind of industry standard. Um, that's, there've been some studies done that say, you know, how much of their taxes go towards certain things, and about twenty percent is, but there's cer- certainly people who do more and certainly people that do less, so ultimately, it's up to the pleasure of council, so.
Thank you.
Are we pretty much in line with other municipalities?
Yeah, I, I did a fee schedule study this year, so, um, I would say we're a little, our, what would now be our non-resident rate, if you decide to go that way, would be a little bit higher than, um, Henderson County, um, we're less than Flat Rock is the most expensive in our community.
Okay.
Or in our county, but yeah, we're right in line, um, with that, what's currently twenty-five dollars an hour with other municipalities.
Oh, I have anything else? Nope. Might make a motion to approve, deny, change?
I'll make the motion that we approve the fee schedule as presented by Nicole.
Okay, second on that? Thanks, James. Any discussion? Here, huh? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, we go to committee reappointments.
Council, in front of you this evening, you've got um several reappointments for our Parks Board of Adjustment and Planning Board. Our deputy clerk, Patty Brown, is here to help answer any questions you might have about those terms.
You were emailed last week the applications of the individuals that are up for reappointment as well as the attendance record. Questions?
Any questions for Patty on these? We'll take them one at a time. That would be the best way to handle. Uh throw that with Ms. Hill. She's uh willing to serve again. Got good attendance record. So on so forth.
And I've talked to her, she's interested in serving again.
Okay.
I will say, before we get into any action.
I can't find my mouse.
Okay, Jeff, what was your statement?
I was going to simply say that um I'd like to see a change on the uh planning board, and currently, I'm not supportive of a reappointment of Ms. Hill.
Okay.
Uh whether you want to discuss particulars or not, but uh I would like to uh consider other people for that seat.
That being said, um any other discussion on it?
So I served with Sherri on the planning board, and I think uh I think she does a good job, she runs a good meeting. Uh she's very organized and and uh she has opinions, just like everybody on the planning board should and does. Um but I I am strongly in favor of reappointing Sherri back to the planning board.
Anyone else want to elaborate?
Well, I'll just sort of um I guess give counter to Councilman's Austin, Councilman Austin's opinion. Uh my problem is objectivity, and uh the most recent example was, of course, we as a council had uh asked the planning board revisit the food trucks, particularly the food park. And I attended the uh planning board meeting where they took that up, and uh what's concerning to me was uh when it came up on their agenda that uh the chair, which was uh Ms. Hill, uh entered into a preamble, which I would characterize where she was dismissive of this council, and uh, and I'm paraphrasing, but that we were coming to them, wasting their time, this was a knee-jerk reaction, it hadn't been implemented for even a year, and uh and and as I said, we we were wasting their time, now. I was fortunate that once the planning board members heard same concerns that we had about the uh two trucks making a food park, and that really needed to be revisited, the planning board uh went a different direction, of course, and concurred with the council for need to rewriting it, but my problem lies in that uh she was using basically her position as the chair to poison the well before even any discussion was taken. I'm fine with somebody hearing the facts, staff reports, concerns of the council, and then rendering a opinion that this is a waste of time, we got it right the first time, but she was very defensive of that particular ordinance uh that you personalized it, and set out to basically, as I said, she lost her objectivity, I'm glad there's diverse opinions on it, and I'm glad when our uh committees that advise us and our boards that advise us have a wide perspective in those opinions that differ from ours, however, I have a very a big problem with somebody that, uh like I said, tries to influence the planning board before they even had the first discussion on it in in that manner, so I mean, there's been other instances similar to that, but for that reason, uh I'm not comfortable, and I think we can be better served with somebody that uh like I said, has a little more objectivity about uh the matters that come before them on the planning board.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't at that meeting, Jeff, and uh I understand your concern, but I guess what I'm thinking is that to go back and think about, and James can and can allude to this also, about the time that was spent on the food truck ordinance to start with, as the planning board spent. I can't even tell you how many meetings. James might be able to tell how many meetings that they spent on it, talking about it, every which way, coming and going, and then the food truck ordinance hadn't even been in effect for a year, and they're talking about redoing it again. Uh I could see how that could be frustrating, maybe maybe that's where it came from. But uh like I say, I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know.
Yes, we did. It was a long time. It was, I think, close to a year.
It was, it was a long time.
It started out when I was here and rolled over into the next council.
And it, I guess, just spending that much time on something and then thinking you have it behind you, and then coming back to it again is is probably frustrating, so.
And I agree with you on that, and I do agree that she runs a good meeting, but I do agree that her opinions get the best of her, and we're maybe using the microphone, yes, to taint things that we shouldn't. You know, that there's more than just that that's been said, and some things are hard to unwrit.
Mm-hmm.
That's, I mean, I do have a a hard time with that. Well, and I've said in open meetings before that I look at the planning board and board of adjustment completely different than our advisory committees because they're they're uh created by ordinance, they're part of our charter and services we provide, they have uh approval powers that do not bypass this body, that go directly to them. So uh the most important thing, as I said, diversity is crucial, but objectivity in somebody that can be convinced of something different, and I really took it as a front on that particular case, and then there's other instances similar to that where before it was even heard, she tried to and uh impose her opinion on that board before they even took it up, and like I said, fortunately, there is object, excuse me, objectivity on that board because they uh agreed with us and decided that we do need to revisit the park, the food park portion of it, so it's not so much that she's got strong opinions, because I hope people on the planning board have strong opinions, and those meetings I've sat through, people express them, and it's a very good board, but I have real misgivings, and because I rely heavily on all the boards, those two in particular, to like I said, to be objective and have the best interests of Mills River at at their forefront, not their own personal opinions or objectives, so uh since we depend on them and they serve at our pleasure, that I would feel more assured if we had somebody else on the planning board and not, I mean, kudos her for her dedication and what she's put in, but I don't think we're getting our best our most objective opinion or most objective work from Ms. Hill as a member of that board, especially as a chair, so for that reason, I'm not supportive of a reappointment, and I would like for this council to look at the applications on file and consider someone else. Man, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Anything else?
Um earlier than I have listened to the planning board meetings, and I've heard several comments directed towards council, and I have had a personal experience of disrespect, and it's not appreciated.
Okay. Well, I will say that I come on board with one opinion of Ms. Hill, but after being around her some, I I and being the, what you would call the chair of this board, can sympathize with her a little bit in some of the ways she goes about handling business, getting people motivated uh to talk, um sitting in this chair, a lot of times you have to be the motivator. You know, you know, ask for people to come off of something, you know. She can be opinionated, and she, I'm sure she knows that, um but uh I'm just grateful that she's got the animosity to do what she does and try as hard as she does to make, fulfill a seat. And I would ask that, you know, if y'all feel this strongly about it, y'all would need to uh find a replacement for her. I mean, I don't feel like it's you know. Y'all would have to look through those applications and come up with someone, and uh nominate their own chair. I'm talking about her seat, she, I mean, yeah, she, if you replace her, she'll be gone, we're not talking about the chair itself, we're just talking about that position. That's what I'm saying, y'all can look through them. I mean, and I don't know that it has to happen tonight, because as I look at this, uh February fourteenth, so we would have to do it by, we've got two more meetings?
Well, there's one more meeting before the next planning board meeting.
Okay.
They've got, they meet the week prior to council in February, once you've got your tech meeting this month, that you could have the discussion.
I would suggest that y'all look highly into the pool of people that's on the planning board and think my, who might possibly be the chair to run it. You know, that'll be a consideration, because it is a task.
Yeah, and then this is the the first of the year, all of our boards are responsible for uh reappointing their chairs and vice chairs, um so they'll be looking at that at their next meeting.
Okay. If y'all want to do it tonight, and I've got someone in mind, I would you could make a motion to nominate someone, and we'll see where it goes.
I'll nominate Billy Kimsey, I had an application. He's been a longstanding resident of Mills River, and I think he would do a fine job, he's a gentleman, and he has a business to operate, and I think it would be a good for the planning board. So I'll nominate him.
All right, I got a nomination second.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion before we take a vote?
Is there only one opening on the planning board?
Just uh, yes.
And and you take some kind of action. You don't have a vacancy. You've discussed it, but you've not taken any action, so.
We don't have a vacancy until February fourteenth.
Right, or you could right now vote to remove. Step on. Or vote to not reappoint, and then um after the fourteenth, fill a new term.
As I understand now, the motion on the floor is to appoint Mr. Kimsey to the seat currently held by Sherri Hill, correct?
Which if that's the case, we would need a
I mean, I'll ask the motion maker if that's, that's what I think I seconded, but
Yes.
Just so they're clear.
So just so I understand, we're, this motion would include uh removing her and putting Billy in the seat immediately, correct?
Yes.
That's what your motion is?
But we're not removing her, her term has expired.
Well, I don't think we can do that. We don't have an open seat to put Billy in.
You can do that, you can just appoint him as of February fourteenth, and just so his term wouldn't start immediately.
That motion, just a little, but you can handle that if that's how you desire. That makes sense, I'm just making sure we're all on the same page with this, this is.
It it's all in how you word it. Um Sherri is in that seat until the fourteenth, unless you take action otherwise tonight. If you want to take a mo- make a motion for him to fill her seat, i- it's council's choice, you you can do it tonight, I mean, you can do it effective tonight for a two-year term. So it would be his, he'd be up in two years on January twelfth.
Seat's filled now for a two-year term.
And Ms. Hill is removed. So that's your motion.
So Jeff would need to either agree to that or or he'd have to let that motion, the original motion die, right, just for procedure, so.
But I have a little bit of heartburn with that, because
Okay.
I'd, I'm not in the business of removing people from boards unless there's something improper, so I just assume let the term expire as we had planned, so I don't plan to second that motion.
Well, let me say that the way I understand it, they will be electing a new chair uh next, their next meeting, which will be the first Tuesday in February.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
So she'll be in that seat then, she could potentially get reappointed to chair, then she would be removed on the fourteenth, the way y'all are talking right now, if the motion carried, then replaced by Billy, which would not necessarily be the chair, he would, there'd be a re appointment of the chair at that point, am I correct?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. So.
I want to do the cleanest one, that's not going.
Politics, it ain't always clean. I'm just telling you how it is, so you just need to tell us how you want to handle it, and I'll see if I can get a second, and then we'll vote after discussion, and we'll go from there. So your first
So y'all want to wait until the term ends on the fourteenth?
Yes, it's been, at least my experience on this council is that generally, once the term expires, we refill it, we can be proa- or we've taken a more proactive approach now, and staff comes to us at least thirty days, most of the time, if not more than that, uh to let us know of an upcoming vacancy, in this case, we would be taking action tonight to fill it in February.
Will that wait?
Billy would be replacing, on your motion, Billy would be replacing her on, starting at midnight of February the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
That's good.
Does that make sense? Is that the way I understand it? Okay. All right, all right, I got a motion and a
I'll second that motion.
Second that motion. The first motion is dead, correct?
Or amended.
Y'all both agree to that one? Any discussion on this before I call for a vote?
So we're not kicking her off, or does not re appointing the term?
The next term.
Yeah, she's fulfilling her term.
Finding somebody else.
Well, she's, yeah, she's already, uh her motion has Billy Kimsey coming into that seat. Makes sense? Yeah, starting February fifteenth, she would hold the seat until midnight of February the fifteenth, and then Billy would
Meeting in between now and then is irrelevant. Nothing's changed.
Correct.
Yeah, nothing's changed, she would still be the chair, they'll vote on the
That chair.
On that, on that chair that night. So Billy won't be in that vote, she could actually get reappointed to chair, maybe, maybe not, and then
That was the only reason I was saying, you know, to go ahead and do a
I mean, if we I suspect the vice chair would take over the next meeting if it's the first meeting without Ms. Hill on the board.
And so they can hold elections. If I may, just just for for point of order, the the original motion that was made was to appoint Mr. Kimsey, and that received a second. Uh there was not clarity on whether that meant moving Ms. Hill from the board or letting it expire, so I just I want the record to reflect the discussion accurately, and and that is uh stop me if I'm I'm going out of bounds here, but I think that the original motion was to appoint Mr. Kimsey following expiration of Ms. Hill's term. Okay, and that was your understanding of the motion, Jeff? Okay. So there was some other discussion in between there, but I I think for practical purposes, no one wants to remove her immediately. The term's going to expire, and uh just due to the scheduling of the board, uh
And uh, just due to the scheduling of the board, uh, Mr. Kimsey's first appearance on the board will be in March. Because Ms. Hill's term runs out after the next planning board meeting. Okay, I'll make sure we're on the same page there.
So I got a first and a second. Any more discussion? I just want to throw this out there. The. Vice chair for the planning board, Harley, is Jim Pausch. It takes a long time to understand all the stuff on the planning board. A long time. James knows this. Jeff knows this. We have one new member from, that was just appointed. In November, correct?
Yes.
So I just want to caution everybody that this is, that there's a lot goes on in the planning board and there's, there's a lot to learn. A lot to go. It's a big book. It's a big book. The big book.
I agree with, I agree a hundred percent, but. That's not going to be my vote because we are in the business of politics.
So we got a first, second, any more discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
No, no. Okay, you should. Got one. All right, we got uh. Reappointment for the Board of Adjustments. I'll let you help me with Linda. Where we at with Linda?
Served on the Board of Adjustment since two thousand and five. Her current eight term expires February twenty-seventh. Um, she's got an excellent attendance record and she's expressed an interest in continuing to serve. And you're struggling to find people for Board of Adjustments.
Uh, discussion? So I'll just say this. I've been to quite a few uh, Board of Adjustment meetings and. She cracks me up. She really does. She, she always sits there and she, she thinks the stuff that. And it's, and it's relevant and she comes up with questions that puts people on the spot. I think she does a really good job on Board of Adjustments, so. I'd like to see her continue that.
Is he the vice chair? I think she. She sits right beside Bert.
Yeah. Is that a motion or anything? I'll make it into a motion. Um, looking for a second on Linda.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, reappointment for Parks, Trails and Recreation. Mr. Eugene Edwards.
So in October of um, twenty twenty-two, council appointed Eugene to finish um, a former member's term due to resignation. That term ends on February twenty-sixth. Mr. Edwards has expressed an interest in continuing to serve.
This, he seemed to be a lot in that? Right, okay. Any discussion from council?
Yes, sort of. Are we tapped on all? Um, applications? Like, is there zero or anybody? I, or can I just not find it on my, on my? Uh, phone.
For which board?
Any of them.
Um, yours sent out applications whenever there's a vacancy.
Oh, I just need to look harder. Okay, answer my question.
There's four or five on the. Planning board and a few for the Parks Committee. Nobody on the Board of Adjustment, I don't think. Yeah, there is one, so.
I move we reappoint Mr. Edwards to the Parks Committee.
There you go.
I'll second.
Thanks, Sandra. Any discussion on Mr. Edwards? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to staff reports. How far can you get caught up?
Nothing further.
Thanks. Tax collector.
Um, so you have your um, property tax collection report. I just brought it in this evening and handed it to you. You didn't get it um. Previous to the meeting because hmm, tax law. Um, this report is for all taxes that have been paid on time. And any tax, any payment that is postmarked January fifth. Is considered on time, no matter when we receive it. Um, so I wait till the very last minute. It's very possible that this will change and I'll bring you a revised. Um, report at the end of the month, but as of Thursday, January fifth, um, we collected. The two point seven, almost two point seven five million dollars. The balance to collect is about a hundred and sixty thousand. And it gives us a collection percentage, on-time percentage of ninety-four point five one percent. Slightly down from last year, but last year was just insanely. Wonderful. It was like a percentage point above every other year, so. I'm not surprised that it's a little less. Um, delinquent bills will go out the first week in February. And we'll start doing some enforced collections the middle of next month.
Okay. All right, any questions?
I'm just curious if you could characterize the, the delinquency, the success of getting, of collecting those taxes to, you know, if there's five percent of the total. Do half those usually? Are they collected in the first year or, let me just. You can give anecdotal, you don't have to give anything, you know, you're not married to these numbers or anything.
Um, you know, mostly, like, like I said, our on-time collection rate. Has only been about ninety-four or the high ninety threes. Um, in previous years and we've still gotten close to or over ninety-nine percent collection by the end of the year.
That first year, okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Harley? Okay, uh. Nicole, Parkson, right?
Uh, just a couple of things real quick. Um, we do have our next free produce market here at the park next Tuesday, the seventeenth. That's from two to three P M. Also, on January twenty-seventh will be the blood drive here in Town Hall. And then also just if you all know anybody or anyone listening knows. We are currently seeking instructors to help us provide some of these recreation program things we're trying to get going. We have a new proposal form on our website, so if someone does. You know, yoga instructors out there or art instructors, those sort of things, um, and want to share it with the community, we're looking for those partners. And they can go on our website and they can email our recreation programmer and we'd love to set up a meeting and talk, so um, I think that is all I have.
Is it my understanding that y'all would still be interested in possibly renting the community building for a few functions as the year goes by?
We would love to, to have some more indoor space to utilize for some programming.
So if council would just kind of keep that in mind, if I know of any indoor space that we could. After school programs or whatever, we could.
Yeah, and after school, we're already in talks with the schools, so we're pretty good as far as after school type, but we're looking for daytime use, particularly for senior and preschool type programs. Um, we obviously have this room here, but it's often busy, so trying to schedule it. So if anyone knows of any indoor space that we can utilize.
Okay.
Would be, definitely let me know.
Any other?
The funds for these projects that they're going to do, are they coming from the fees they charge for the fund range or where the funds go?
Well, there was already money programmed in the budget for recreation programming. And as I mentioned earlier, we will, a lot of programs will have fees associated with it to cost to participate. And that's something we will bring back to you at a future meeting on exactly what that looks like. Um, but yeah, there will, will be cost recovery associated with a lot of the programs.
Anything else? Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Um, planning director.
Uh, Mr. Malachek was not able to attend this evening, so I'm going to assume those uh, updates for tonight and. The only one I, I really have to offer is that our new employee here is Kevin Webb. He's our planning technician. Uh, he comes to us uh, from Henderson County by way of Florida. Um, currently a master's student at Western Carolina University and he has some experience working here locally. Um, so he, he started last Tuesday. Kevin, you want to just say a couple of words to the council?
Um, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Um, and I look forward to starting my career in the public sector. Um, I recently worked at Bright Farms as administrative assistant down near um, Pleasant Grove Road, just south of Edelweiss. Um, I also worked at Amazon as a driver trainer, as rotation associate. Um, but overall, I'm grateful to start my public sector career with the town of Mills River and um, in my perspective field.
Good deal. Glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
Any other questions for planning or for Kevin? You're none? All right.
And I have no further updates from management either.
Okay, council comments, any council comments?
Whoever sent me the nice text, um. That's the reason why I voted no. So um, I don't have your number and uh, you can lose mine, whoever you are. Thank you.
Okay. All right, anything else?
I think this is our first meeting since the sanatorium, is it not?
Yes.
Well, I just wanted to tell folk that that was my first experience and I thought it was fantastic.
It's crazy, man.
Kudos to the council members, kudos to the staff. Uh, I hope to be part of it every year, but.
I'll loan you my suit.
If you haven't been. If you haven't been part of it and you have the opportunity to participate, I highly recommend it. It'll get you in this Christmas spirit and uh, I was amazed. I think the adults were. More grateful and more excited than a lot of the kids were.
Exactly. It's unbelievable.
They, and a lot of folks were like me, they were on their front porch step and they had never been part of it before. And when they see it, they, you know. They just didn't think stuff like that happens anymore with, especially when it's town sponsored, so.
What I like about it is making the, the big eight-hour loop and looking for the residents that was there last year and a year before. It's so cool. And when you pass some of them porches and they ain't there and you know they're elderly, you're like, oh no, oh no, no. But you go in there and make a cul-de-sac and come back out. And they're up there and you're like, heck, yeah, they're still with us. Here we go. That's wonderful. That's the best Christmas ever. Okay, anything else?
I just wanted to let y'all know that Katrina did have fun with the after Christmas sale when costumes were half off. So just so you know.
Did you get his sign? Okay, good deal. If anything else, I'd make your motion to adjourn, please. Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Maybe it's quit raining so hard.
Thank you.